I'm going to reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting for November 16th at 7:03 PM. All council members are present. Councilman Jeff Toborg is present via the interwebs. He is remote with us tonight, so he is on the Zoom meeting. Council and those in the room, if you would, please join me in honoring our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are these screens off for a reason?
They just haven't sent a signal to them yet. But like mine's turned on, but it's not showing anything yet. All right, special presentations. I'm going to apologize. I didn't bring my glasses tonight, so I'm gonna do my best here. Special presentations. We've got a presentation for Colorado Gives Day.
Thank you, John.
And presented by the Douglas County Community Foundation. And let's see. Susan, I see you're on here. How are you?
Hi, Mike. I'm great. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. And Jeanette is going to be my right hand. And so if I could ask her to begin with the first slide for our presentation tonight. And I want to say hi to not only the mayor, but all the town council members. I miss all of you.
We miss seeing you, too. Hope you're staying well.
I am. Thank you. So thank you for making time on your agenda for a special word about the 2020 Colorado Gives Day on December 8th this year. 2020 has changed so many things for all of us, but what hasn't changed is the importance of each of us helping another. 2020 has proven that need knows no borders. Douglas County residents became acutely aware that there are needs in Douglas County this year, and they stepped up by giving generously to our local nonprofits that serve our neighbors. Research shows that the brain behaves differently during an act of generosity. And when people give a gift, there's a feeling of connection. And when gifts are received, people have a greater strength to overcome their challenges, and they know they're not alone. I have a video that I'd like to share, and if Jeanette could run that, please. The community foundation produced this earlier this year as we launched our own COVID-19 recovery fund. Jeanette, are you turning that on?
Is Jeanette able to?
She tried to click it. I saw her cursor. She tried to click it.
It appears we're having technical difficulties.
Happens all the time, doesn't it?
Let me try text, see if I can get in touch with Jeanette. There she goes. It locks up sometimes.
Yep.
She's trying.
It's embedded in that screen, and I think Carrie also sent US direct link. Okay, thank you. Just one moment. This is Jeanette, Susan. I'll pull it up in just a moment. Sure, I can do that. So the video was produced, and it's a lot of the leaders of the local nonprofits that are speaking.
Oh, there we go. And then we gotta get the volume. Hmm, Jeanette, the volume is not coming through. Well, Susan, I think, how about this? Since if you've had the link sent over, we'll have Jeanette send the link to everyone on council so we can individually watch it.
Sure. And a lot of the people in that, in the video, you're going to recognize, you know, CCor certainly takes a really leadership role in the county in helping those in need. So the Douglas County nonprofits have always shared the challenge of raising awareness of the needs here at home. Not only do larger funds invest very little in Douglas County because of our high wealth ranking, but also residents donate generously outside of Douglas County. But 2020 has really opened our eyes and our pocketbooks. Can you do the next slide, Jeanette?
It looks like the PowerPoint is.
Just one, just one moment. My apologies. Excellent. Thank you. So the Douglas County Community Foundation is really proud to serve as the regional champion again this year to support our local nonprofits on Colorado Gives Day. And we're grateful for your support in helping us get out the word about Gives Day because it is working. You can see on this slide that on, over the last several years, the amount of dollars given by Douglas County residents to our nonprofits has increased steadily. Colorado Gives Day last year, Douglas County nonprofits received nearly $3.3 million through Colorado Gives. And that was a 23% increase in donations from 2018. Just probably, I think that's the biggest increase that we've seen. So our message is messaging is definitely working. In fact, 47% of Douglas County residents donated to Douglas County organizations on Colorado Gives Day last year, which is really a high number. This generosity also enabled the Douglas County Community Foundation to distribute over $82,000 in grants last year, many of those supporting COVID-19 relief. Jeanette, next slide. Thank you. This slide represents a wide variety of the Douglas County nonprofits that are represented by the Douglas County Community Foundation on Gives Day. We're keenly aware of the struggles that they're experiencing from how they do business to how they serve, to how they've had to pivot on their fundraising this year, and some have even had to cancel their major fundraisers. The struggle makes giving on Colorado Gives Day even more important this year. Plus, participating on Colorado Gives Day gives the nonprofits access to additional incentive funds that are provided by First Bank. The Douglas County Community Foundation, we believe that strong nonprofit organizations really help build our stronger communities, and they contribute to improving the quality of life for many. These local nonprofits are really the cornerstone of our community. Next slide. Everyone can make a difference, and together, we can make an even larger lasting impact. You can help out your favorite nonprofits by donating this year, and you can even schedule donations anytime. They started November 1st, and you can schedule now for December 8th. Be sure to watch, then, for our annual Douglas County Giving Guide, which will be coming out in the Parker Local Community Newspaper on December 3rd. It will highlight each of the nonprofits taking part in Douglas County Gives Day. What a great conversation to have with your family at home. And the final slide. Thank you. Your support means so much to so many. Here are some ways that you can step forward and help the community foundation and the nonprofits on Colorado Gives Day. First, we'd love if you would pass the resolution to support Colorado Gives Day for Douglas County this year. And if you, we could ask for your support in the effort on your social media channels. Our COO, Carrie Bucken, will be forwarding the materials for the social media campaign this year, and all of the municipalities and governments helped last year, and I think that really contributed to that huge increase in donations. So the efforts have clearly been making a difference, and we thank you for helping to inspire others to give where you live. That's all I have for you this evening, and I really appreciate the time that you allowed so that we can remind you of the importance.
Susan, thank you so much for the presentation and for all the work you put into this. Council, do you have any questions for Susan at this time? Josh?
If I, if I could, Susan, thank you so much. It's great to see you again. One of these days, we'll see you in person. I see, I see that we do have a proclamation on the December 7th agenda, so I'll be proud to, to push that. But I also will echo what Susan says, and I hope that the Communications Department of Parker Town Hall can push some stuff out, and we can, we can all partner this, partner together in this, because I know there are some Parker charities and organizations that truly, truly appreciate any generosity we can, we can garner. So thank you again for being here, Susan.
Thank you so much. And if you would share a copy of your proclamation with us, we'd love that, too.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. All right. Have a good meeting.
Thanks, Susan.
Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Bye.
All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is for general public comment for items that are not currently on our agenda. The way it works, for those watching at home, if you want to submit general public comment, you go to our website and submit there, parkeronline.org by 5:00 PM on a council meeting day. I do know there was some non-agenda item, public comment that was submitted by today, and that has been emailed to all of council, which is the normal policy for that. So next item up is reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Why don't we start with Jeff Toborg, since he's remote? Make it easiest for him.
Great. Good evening, everyone. The only thing I have to report, Mayor, is that I attended the DBA liaison last Wednesday morning, and I believe this is their last DBA event of the, or meeting of the year. But it was fantastic, and they are pushing ahead with all their plans to revitalize and, and continue to revive Main Street for the coming year.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. Josh?
Nothing this week, Your Honor.
Cheryl?
Nothing this week either.
Debbie?
Oh, good.
Debbie's got a stack in front of her.
Well, we had a good, we had, Councilman Toborg and I had Parks and Recreation meeting last Monday, and just a, just a little quick, well, maybe not too quick, since I have more time. On a projects update, the Field House turf was renovated when it, during the annual closure. The East-West Trail undercrossing at Jordan Road received 700,000 shareback funds from COSAC. So that, that was really good when we get to use somebody else's money and to help. Parks and Rec Department, the Attorney's Office, and Community Development completed the new park development code update for amenities that now have to be included. Cheryl, you'll really like this. Must be included for planning neighborhood and community parks. That's something we approved back in October. The Auburn Hills renovation was completed. If you remember, that Public Service Company donated $1.2 million for mitigation. And a cool thing in there is that the Girl Scouts did a dedication at that park on September the 19th. And they, I believe, if I'm saying this correctly, and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or probably you shouldn't. It, they, it's a swing. It's called a bird's nest swing. It's circular, and it's kind of got a center part to it, similar to a trampoline, but it's got, I think, four lead lines that you can swing, you know, kind of backwards and forwards or sideways. So that, I thought that was pretty cool. Also, because of budget constraints and with COVID and things changing so, that are fluid, instead of our regular brochure, I call it a magazine from Parks and Recs, they're not going to do that because of cost reduction. And things are changing so quickly. They're going to put out a card, a slick card, this is what, similar, not this big, that'll go out about every two months so that people can know, they can tell better what won't be canceled in a two-month increment period of time. So that will save money as well as being something really, really cool that they can have in their hands without the, out the magazine. They also, on the back of the cards that'll be sent out, they'll have a QR code that you can scan over and, and give some further information about that. Then tomorrow night, Mr. Diack and I have a cultural and scientific meeting via Zoom. And on Friday, Councilwoman Rivera and I picked up trash.
Very nice.
And we weren't doing community service because we were in trouble. This was because DBA adopted Pike's Peak from Main Street to Hilltop.
Cool.
So that's all.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of E470 meetings last week. We had a board meeting. We had an item on the I-70 express toll lanes. Just a note, E470 is the back office or the toll collections for all of the managed lanes or P3 lanes in Colorado. So that. We also had a, an approval for the Aurora Parkway IGA with the City of Aurora. That's relevant because that will go over E470 just to the north of Costco, and it's hopeful that Douglas County will connect to that Aurora Parkway. So it gives people on the east side of Parker Road, in Parker and unincorporated, another avenue to potentially bypass Parker Road and all the congestion. On Friday, we had a capital projects meeting. We talked about the, the five-year capital projects to, to improve and expand the toll way. Not to mention beyond that. We also talked about debt structure and how we could call some, some additional debt to reduce those outstanding amounts. And a pretty robust discussion. And just another FYI with, with the recent events here in Colorado, E470 is 100% financed by toll collections, and our traffic last week compared to the previous year was down 41%. So those, those health orders have an impact on E470 because if I-25 and other roads are not congested, people will not make the choice to, to use E470. So that impacts revenues, and we have to figure out how to compensate. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up on our, next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There's no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless a council member asks to have an individual item removed. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and cannot be removed for discussion. So council in front of you, you have consent agenda items 5A through 5H.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 5A through 5H, please.
Second?
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie. My understanding is that we're going to use our virtual, or not our virtual, our electronic voting system, so it should be popped up in front of you to vote.
Yes. So I wanted to have some items removed, but you jumped in there so fast.
Then vote no on yours. He already had a motion, so. Motion passes four to one with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item up is item six. These are public hearings. First up is 6A. This is an ordinance, this is a public hearing for ordinance number 1.539.4 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2020 revised budget for the town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou, you are going to lead us through this.
I am, and I am Mary Lou Brown, the Finance Director. Thank you. We are going to start off this public hearing talking about our 2020 budget. So just to kind of put it, everything back into perspective, we talked back in May about reducing the budget. We did, in anticipation of impacts from COVID. Our revenue, sales tax revenue in particular, never really took a hit. And so in July, we talked about rolling some of those reductions back. And so that was the direction that council gave us during the course of a study session, and we have done that. Tonight, we are going to formalize that step and asking for approval for the specific rollbacks. So we have talked mainly about the general fund rollbacks, and we've talked about those in specifics. Jeanette, if you want to pull up the 2020 presentation and go to the one slide.
I think she had it up, and she might be having some technical issues, so let's be, be patient on that. For some reason, PowerPoint is not wanting to work with Zoom very well tonight.
I can keep talking.
If you'd like to, please.
Okay. So the reductions or changes that we've talked about in the general fund are, in addition to revenue, it nets a $1.6 million. And then on the expense side, with a combination of personnel-related expenses, reinstating several projects and transfers, we are looking to increase the appropriations for 2020 by $4.4 million. There are six other funds that are impacted by the personnel-related expense increase, and so those were attached to the material that was sent out as part of the CAF. In addition, the excise, cultural, and medical benefits funds are being impacted. Those are offsets to entries that are being made in the general fund. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mary Lou. Any questions for Mary Lou on this? Cheryl?
Yeah, Mary Lou, you've got personnel-related expense, oh, I guess it's related expense at 1.7 roughly million. Exactly what would those be?
So that is all of the pieces that we reduced back in the May timeframe. So that includes the furlough days, the five furlough days. It includes freezing positions. There were probably about a dozen positions that we froze. It also included a workforce reduction that we had worked in but had never really brought to fruition.
Okay. Any other questions, Cheryl?
Nope. Thank you.
Jeff, did you have a question?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, just like wave your hands wildly if you do have a question, so I don't have to keep bugging you on it, because I'm, just to make sure I don't leave you out of that. So.
I will. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:26 PM. For those of you who are on the Zoom call, if you're watching on the Facebook livestream and you want to give public comment on one of the items, you can't do it through Facebook. You have to be on the Zoom link, which is on the, the Facebook page there that you're watching, the Facebook livestream. So if you are on the Zoom for this meeting and you want to give public comment on this item or any other one when it comes up, all you have to do is use your raise your hand feature, and Jeanette will promote you over so that you can give public comment on this item. There's a three-minute time limit. There's a clock here that I will start, and when it gets down to 30 seconds left, I will remind you of 30 seconds. And then at three minutes, I will thank you and move on to the next person. So with that, if there's anyone here for public comment on this item, please use your raise your hand feature. Okay, I'm not saying any. Jeanette, can you confirm that?
I can confirm there are no public comments, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll close public comment at 7:27 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.539.4 on second reading.
Second. We have a motion from Debbie, and we have a second from Josh. Council, please use your computers to vote as this, when the screen pops up.
Ooh, it's quick now.
That was really quick.
Chris was like, I know this routine from Mike. I'm gonna go ahead and get it started five minutes ago. Motion passes four to one with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item up is item public hearing 6B. This is public hearing for ordinance number 1.547 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou, we got you one more time.
You do. So this public hearing is for the 2021 budget. We have had quite a few conversations around this. We started back working on it internally early summer here in Town Hall and presented the budget at the budget retreat at the end of September. In addition, we've had a study session and one other public hearing on the budget. So tonight, I'm not going to take you through all the numbers again. You're probably to the point where you have memorized them as much as I have. So I think just for the public's benefit, I'll talk just a little bit about the, how we pulled the budget together, the guidelines that we used in creating it. So we have a requirement to meet a cash balance percentage. That is a comparison of our total cash in the general fund to the total expenses. So we have done that with this budget. We have invested in our employees by funding a 3% performance pay and step plan increase for our commissioned officers. We have maintained and grown our community programs. Many of the programs that were cut back this year have been reinstated for 2021. And then also preparing financially for some upcoming strategic decisions. So those were the guidelines that we used in putting the budget together. I can very definitely say we've achieved those. We have been very careful in how we have budgeted for 2021, primarily because of the unknown continuing impacts of COVID. The sales tax revenue is budgeted at a 3% increase. We have been trending down this year. We started as high as 8%, and we've been trending down on a path to potentially hit that 3% for this year also. In addition to that, our operating expenses are increasing about 2%, so right along, along in guideline with inflationary costs. So those are pretty much the main items that we've included in the general fund budget. I have, or Jeanette has, the presentation that has all of the other funds attached also if there are questions. But with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Mary Lou? Jeff, I don't see you making any big arm movements.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:31 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to address council on this item, please use your raise your hand feature in the Zoom meeting, and Jeanette will bring you over. And Jeanette, I don't see any hands going up. Can you confirm that?
That's correct. There are no public comments.
Excellent. We'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:31 PM. And council, I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 1.547 on second reading, please.
Second?
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie. Council, please vote.
Whoa.
It's moving today, huh?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item C. Big deep breath. Next item on our agenda, item C. This is for Anthology North Plan Development Amendment Number Two. It's made up of two different, we'll have one presentation, but there's two different items in here that council will be looking at tonight. First one is C1. This is ordinance number 3.308.2 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend the Anthology North Development Plan and Guide, First Amendment pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And C2 is the Third Amendment to the amended and restated Stro Ranch Hesse Annexation Agreement, Northern Property. And wow, we've got, you're leading us tonight?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. Stacy, jump right into it. We get the A-team.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be presenting this item to you tonight. Brianna, who's the case manager, is available and is on Zoom, and will be answering any questions you may have after my presentation. questions you may have after my presentation. All right, so this is a proposal for a Plan Development Amendment to both the PD guide and the PD map. Next slide, please. So the subject property is located on the south side of Hess Road between Chambers and Motzenbacher Roads. The applicant PCS Group is requesting the approval of a zoning amendment for Segment One to the Anthology North Plan Development. Specifically, the applicant is requesting the following changes: planning area boundary amendment, lot standard revisions, and a partial waiver resolution compliance. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to amend these planning area boundaries to support the dendritic design. This design is a way to preserve natural features of the site, such as floodplains, drainageways, and existing topography. Incorporating the dendritic design has resulted in an increase in the open space of roughly 40 acres. It is important to note that while the planning area boundaries are proposed to be reconfigured, there is no increase in the overall numbers of units that are currently permitted in these planning areas. The current proposal is only for Segment One. Future rezonings and amendments will take place for Segments Two and Three to accommodate the dendritic design. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to revise lot size standards to accommodate market demand for attached housing types. The current PD has a standard minimum lot size of 2,500 square feet for single-family attached residential products. These lot sizes are typically too large for standard townhome and duplex developments. The applicant is proposing a minimum lot size of 1,200 square feet for a single-family attached and duplex residential product. Staff has found the reduced lot size is common for these types of home products and is consistent with other lot size requirements in the town. The lot size reduction will not result in a change of the allowed number of residential units. Next slide, please. In May of 2019, Town Council approved a partial waiver resolution to allow the applicant to develop the subject property in three segments. The first segment is generally the southeastern one-third of the subject property, with Segment Two and Three being the balance of the property. The partial waiver resolution was approved, provided two obligations were met. The first being, one-third of Planning Area 15 be developed for only commercial uses. The applicant completed the outlined analysis and found in the waiver resolution and has provided approximately 14 acres of commercial land within Planning Area 15A, outlined in red, whereas the remaining area is to remain mixed use, found in Planning Area 15B. Next slide, please. The second obligation is to provide a Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan for all neighborhood and community parks found in Segment One. The Anthology North Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan shows compliance with the requirements outlined in the partial waiver resolution and the new park standards adopted by the town on October 19, 2020. This plan will continue to be updated with the associated parks in each segment as they are rezoned and developed. Next slide, please. Staff, Planning Commission, and Town Council received an email from two residents, from two town residents on October 26 and October 29, 2020 concerning the fire station location. The current location of the firehouse is located in a future phase. It is not located in the phase we're talking about tonight. Both staff and the applicant have started conversations with South Metro Fire District concerning this location. The applicant has identified a potential location within Segment Two of the planned development for the fire station. The new location needs to be reviewed through, thoroughly by staff and outside agencies through a referral process. This will take place with the Segment Two rezoning. Both staff and the applicant will continue conversations as this project moves forward. Staff has determined that the location for the fire station will be addressed with the Segment Two rezoning. At this time, there are no proposed changes to the fire station site, as this is in a future phase. Next slide, please. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria are used to ensure that the rezoning is consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Staff has determined the proposed changes better align with the nine criteria, as incorporating the dendritic design preserves the existing natural areas, is compliant with the master plan, and does not change the residential densities. Next slide, please. The applicant is also requesting a third amendment to the amended Anthology North Annexation Agreement. There are three major changes. The first being updating the zoning map, which you have just shown. The second is the open space exhibits are being removed to allow the applicant to still meet the intent of the agreement as it relates to the amount of open space, but allowing the applicant to relocate that open space to more logical locations. The amount of required open space will remain the same, but the locations may change based on the dendritic design. The final proposed amendment is an update to the right-of-way dedication statement for acceleration or deceleration lanes at the intersection of Chambers Road and Stro Road as it relates to the proposed Stro Road realignment that will be coming forth with the Hess Ranch Plan Development Amendment. Next slide, please. Staff has reviewed the proposal, and as outlined within the staff report, has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for a rezoning, and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. Staff has recommend, so the Planning Commission also heard this request on November 12, 2020, and recommended, it was not, it was October 29, 2020, and recommended approval. So therefore, staff is recommending that Town Council approve the Anthology North Plan Development and Annexation Agreement. This concludes Planning's presentation. The applicant is also present this evening and has a presentation for you. But I'm available, or Brianna is available for any questions you may have.
So before we get to the applicant, Stacy, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff before we go? Cheryl?
Yeah, you're talking about, what is the actual change in size of commercial space?
Well, I can answer that. So for Planning Area 15 was originally mixed use. So they are creating one-third of that area, so about 14 acres of strict commercial zoning, and then the remainder of it will remain mixed use. So they're making that, instead of that entire area, planning area being mixed use, portion of it will be strictly commercial, and then the rest will be mixed use.
So what's the net change?
So it's, there will be about 14 acres of strict commercial use within that planning area.
Yeah, but change from what before? You're saying there's 14 now. What, what did we have before?
There was no, there was all mixed use.
Okay.
And they, they're keeping, so now 14 of the all is commercial, and the rest stays mixed use. Okay, other questions, Cheryl?
No, that's it, thank you.
So before we get to the next question, Brianna, I would like to compliment you on your Baby Yoda ornament on your tree in your back, in the background there. I was going to make some Mandalorian comments, but I won't at this point. Josh, you had a...
So I just, just for clarification, I understand that there is discussion between South Metro, the developers, and the owners of the property about the moving of the fire station, but that is not applicable, because it's not in this phase at this time, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Brianna.
Okay. Do you have any questions over on this side? Jeff, did you have any questions?
So I just want to ask, in coordination with Councilman Rivera's comment, I believe we have reached out to the neighboring properties, though, correct? And explain that phased approach to them.
That is correct. The applicant has reached out to some of the residents and provided more information also at Plan Commission.
Danette, you got to mute yourself. Hey, Danette, can you, can you, can you mute yourself, Danette?
Oh, sorry.
She's having a party over there. All right. Brianna, you want to go ahead and finish, finish that up?
So the applicant has reached out to some of the property owners and their information provided at Plan Commission as well.
Okay. Jeff, other questions? Nope. All right, then let's go ahead and we'll go, we have a presentation from the applicant, correct? All right. So if the applicant could state their name and address for the record, please? Or, there we go.
Sure. I don't know if it's, it's going to pop up, but anyways, good evening. John Prestwich with PCS Group, 200 Kalamath Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. First off, a big thank you, really, I guess, actually, to both Stacy and Brianna, and really all of Town staff for their help in getting us here this evening. And thank you to all of you for allowing us to make this presentation through Zoom. We really do appreciate that. So on the screen, as part of sort of an introductory image, is a custom shade shelter that we've designed for the Anthology community. We really think it highlights the natural feel of the park and open space areas within the community. Next slide, please. So, you know, we're big believers in collaboration, and we truly recognize that it takes a team effort to put together a proposal for a successful application. And I always want to acknowledge the effort it takes in the creation of a new community for the Town of Parker. This slide highlights many of the team members that have helped us get to this point this evening. And again, we want to recognize all of the input that Town staff has provided as we have worked together throughout this process. Next slide, please. So, okay, so this evening, you know, as, as you've kind of heard, we're here to present a minor amendment to the currently approved PD for the Anthology community. There are a few items I wanted to highlight. One is, you know, basically, the, the reason we're here is pursuing this amendment is to incorporate these dendritic planning principles. And so, as has been mentioned, dendritic planning essentially evaluates the natural drainages on the property, and then works the planning around those natural drainage areas. In general, this style of planning relies less on engineered solutions, and it really more utilizes the natural terrain as best possible to manage the drainage. So this has really been studied on the area east of Chambers Road, essentially what we were calling Segment One. That's really where the, the changes to the currently approved PD are. As Brianna mentioned, it's possible when we get to the west side of the property, we may need to adjust boundaries as part of the dendritic planning. Those drainages are a little bit more defined on the, on the west part of the property. As part of this amendment, I think it's important to point out that the park and open space areas, not just open space, have increased by over 74 acres from the currently approved PD, and that no additional units or any increase in density is being proposed with this PD amendment request. Next slide, please. I'll kind of go through this one pretty quickly. I'm sure you're familiar with where the property is, but just for reference, Anthology is located to the west of Motzenbacher Road in the current Anthology neighborhood, south of Hess Road, north of what will ultimately be the extension of Stro Road, and east of the Ruder Hess Reservoir. Next slide, please. So this upcoming image is the currently approved PD. It's from roughly 2013, 2015. And then over top, I added the location of really two major drainages that caused changes to the planning boundaries that exceeded the allowed 10% change. It's really caused this request. One other item that I wanted to point out, relatively minor, but it's to reclassify an area that was originally T H E, basically townhomes, to S F E, which will keep that area a single family. It's adjacent to the existing Anthology neighborhood. We felt like it was just more in keeping with that neighborhood. Next slide, please. Okay. This slide shows the proposed PD amendment, again highlighting the areas where the open space was added. Additionally, some of the corridors that were already anticipated as open space were widened as part of the dendritic study. And again, this study was really focused on the area east of Chambers. And again, the proposal does not add any units or increase in any densities from the currently approved PD. Next slide, please. So here we have the currently approved PD, it's on the left side of your screen, and then the proposed PD amendment on the right. Again, this is really highlighting the land use areas and shows the area where we're proposing to change that area from T H E, basically the townhomes, to S F E, basically in that southeast corner. Again, the proposal keeps the same number of units as is currently approved with no increase in densities. Next slide, please. And so on this screen is the currently approved PD on the left, and again, the proposed PD amendment on the right. But this slide really highlights the open space and park areas. Again, overall, as part of the process of working with the dendritic planning principles, again mostly focused east of Chambers, in total, including the area north, in the northeast corner, the proposed PD amendment provides about 74 acres of additional park and open space that equates to about a 26% increase from the currently approved PD. Next slide, please. So this slide really kind of crystallizes the dendritic design character. We are currently working on a, on a preliminary plan for a portion of the community. So what you see here is how the neighborhoods are being planned to respect the natural drainages. So as I mentioned, the drainages were identified, the best areas of natural vegetation were identified, and then we kind of work backwards from there. So for example, the grading for the home sites really ends at the rear of the lots to protect the natural vegetation and drainage corridors. We're also using those corridors as trail areas and incorporating parks within those corridors, and even working with the drainage team to design some of the stormwater ponds to have amenity uses and not simply just be some sort of utilitarian stormwater function. The bottom right depicts one of the approximately four-acre neighborhood parks. You can see some multipurpose turf areas. You probably can't see this in there, but there's exercise equipment along the looped trail system, seating areas that highlight the natural drainage corridor and provide interesting viewing options, as well as that iconic shade shelter we showed you, picnic benches and play areas. So they've really kind of incorporated that into the natural environment that we're creating through this dendritic process. Next slide, please. So this was, you know, we just had a little bit of discussion on that. This is part of an agreement with the town, this partial waiver, basically allowing us to sort of phase the design of the Anthology community. And as part of that, we were asked to provide some additional information. So one of those requests was for a conceptual design of how one of the mixed-use areas in the currently approved PD could be designed to ensure that a minimum of one-third of that planning area, Planning Area 15, could be designed to, for commercial uses. So this planning area is at the intersection of Chambers Road and Great Plains Way. It's just about 1,500 feet to the south of the Hess and Chambers Road intersection. This depicts a little over a third of the planning area as commercial uses, primarily along the Chambers frontage and then wrapping a little bit along Great Plains Way. And then the balance of that mixed-use parcel is depicted as an apartment community, all designed in accordance with the town's development design standards. I mean, I think it is important to note that it's not intended to depict any final design, more so to ensure that the requirement of a third of this area ultimately being a commercial use can be, a viable commercial use can be ensured. So similar to the previous slide, part of the additional information that was requested with the waiver request was an overall parks master plan for the community. Again, this primarily focuses on the area east of Chambers. One of the exciting things about this area is that it includes a community park. It's over 30 acres in size, and we think of it, you know, basically as 32 acres of fun in the heart of Anthology. The park is connected to many acres of trails and open space, will ultimately include a pool, clubhouse, off-street parking, a series of terraced, iconic-themed playgrounds, really working with the natural terrain, a trike track, bike trails, overlooks, some of those same shade shelters, an outdoor event area, a large multipurpose turf area. And we're super excited about the collaboration we've already had with the Town of Parker in developing just these initial park concepts, and we're really anxious to move into the more detailed design. On the bottom of this slide, there are two more park areas that will include play areas, the iconic shelters, trails, turf areas, benches, tables, et cetera. Next slide, please. And again, from the parks master plan, this slide really, you know, it highlights four additional parks just south of where we were looking. And part of the purpose of providing a parks master plan is to ensure that the parks are not all the same. So for example, the park at the top left, Park LL, is being themed as a swing park with large oversized swing platforms, as well as traditional swings. Whereas the park on the top right, TT, is being themed to include embankment slides, you know, those slides that follow the natural terrain, and then climbing areas, again utilizing the natural topography. Park YY is a little bit more of a traditional park area, it's an open turf, playground areas, permanent cornhole. We actually found a really cool zip line piece of equipment that we were hoping to put in there. And finally, Park D1, it includes some preserved vegetative areas, a looped trail, horseshoe courts, again playground areas, that iconic shelter with picnic tables and seating. Next slide, please. And, you know, one thing that, obviously, I think you've all heard about that came out of our Planning Commission hearing, is that some of the neighbors in the Horse Creek neighborhood would like us to work with South Metro neighborhood would like us to work with South Metro Fire to see if we can relocate the currently approved fire station location that's in Segment 3 of the Anthology Community. It's kind of highlighted on this slide here. If you could go to the next one, please. So, just an update on that. We have analyzed the site, our site internally, and we believe that we have found another viable location internal to the community. It's basically now at the intersection, we're actively working with South Metro to see if we can get it to work at the intersection of Great Plains and Chambers Road. We have had our engineers do a grading study to ensure that this location works from a physical standpoint, and our client team has had meetings with South Metro, and they're analyzing the site, basically kind of putting their prototype fire station designs on that site to ensure that it works for them. Now, this has happened pretty quickly over about the last two weeks. The amendments to the currently approved PD are really focused on the Segment 1 portion of the Anthology Community. This potential new location would move the location from Segment 3 to Segment 2, but I just, I wanted to kind of get that out. I know that we've had discussions with the adjacent neighborhood, but I just wanted to bring council up to speed on that as well. Next slide, please. So, really, just to summarize, again, the proposal is for some minor modifications to the existing PD, really to bring the plan into conformance with the dendritic design principles being utilized for the community design. This proposal increases the amount of park and open space significantly, as well as changes one area that was originally anticipated really for townhomes to single family, some minor road adjustments, lot size adjustments to facilitate future planning. And finally, both staff and the Planning Commission have recommended approval based on the review of the approval criteria. And with that, I would be happy to answer questions, and our team is willing to raise their hand and answer questions as well.
John, thank you very much for that thorough presentation. Council, do you have any questions for John? Josh, I can't see you.
Josh, at this time.
Okay. Jeff, I wasn't looking at the screen. You're good? Do you have a question?
No, Mayor, I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Presswich for having that explanation on the fire station, relocations, and especially for keeping the neighbors involved. Thank you for that.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Debbie.
I'd just like to thank John and Stacy for using Josh's favorite words 10 times in this presentation.
Oh, I'm sure it was more than that.
No, I counted them.
No, I would say when you included before that, the presentation before, it seemed like it was at least 400 times.
Oh, 10 times.
Dendritic was in there. John?
Yeah, I would, I would like to know any new emerging dendritic-like term that we can look forward to in 2020.
All right, all right. Now, now we're falling apart.
If the development community could let us know, that would be fantastic.
Now, we're falling apart, all right. So we've got two items here. We're going to go ahead and move to a public comment. I'm going to open up public comment at 7:56 PM. Again, just as a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit. Public comment is for the items on this specific item, or for comments on this specific item. There's a three-minute time limit. When, if you would like to give public comment, use your raise your hand feature, and Danette will move you over. You'll state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start the clock. And then at 30 seconds left before you're over with, I'll remind you you've got 30 seconds left, and then when you get to three, I will have, we'll ask you to stop. So with that, if there's anyone here for public comment on this item, please use your raise your hand feature. Okay, and Danette, it looks like we've got a couple, so I will let you go ahead and promote them through.
Mayor, the first public comment is from Ian.
Okay. Ian, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ian Eltnar, 15750 East Indian Brook Circle. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor-elect, and Town Council. Appreciate it. I just wanted to take a moment just to reiterate some of the things we talked about on Planning Commission. First and foremost, thank you for E5X and, you know, Chris Elliott, as well as John and their teams for reaching out and having conversations with us. That's very important. Again, what we're talking about here is 4.13 acres of the 1,200-plus acres, or 0.34% of the overall project, which is about one-third of 1%. So we're not asking for a lot here as it relates to the fire station. I think going forward, I think the location south of Hess is going to be beneficial not only for the existing residents, but future residents south of Hess, as planning will be able to be done in order to provide sufficient buffers and such for a project that's going to be cohesive with the surroundings. You know, I don't have a whole lot to add on the end as it relates to the fire station other than, you know, as, you know, going forward, just to make sure that it's on everybody's radar, you know, existing mayor, future mayor, Town Council, Town Council-elect, so on and so forth. You know, the last thing I think anybody wants to see is a fire station right in their backyard, and, you know, I feel for the neighbors that would have it in their backyard if measures weren't being taken to relocate it to an appropriate location. So I'm going to leave it at that and keep our fingers crossed that ultimately resolution can be obtained to move it to a more appropriate location. So thank you, everybody, on all sides and teams, and have a great evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Ian. We had another hand up?
Yes, it's Alan Meshberg.
Okay, Alan, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Alan Meshberg, and it's 15798 East Indian Brook Circle here in Parker in the Horse Creek subdivision, and my home would be the one backing directly up to the fire station at issue. I did want to thank Mr. Presswich and South Metro and Ian for attacking this topic and looking forward, hopefully, I'll just say I'm cautiously optimistic that this can be moved to the proposed placement of the map. I hope that no one on council would oppose this, as this neighborhood has been here for quite a while. We have established residences here with many small children, and I'd hate to see them being awakened in the middle of the night by lights and sirens. And that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Alan. It looks like we have another hand that came up. Sherry, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Zar, 15786 East Indian Brook Circle. I'd like to thank everybody as well, Ian, as well as John, Town Council, Mayor. Our home would be directly behind this fire station, so I too look forward to hopefully having this moved across the street for all parties involved. So if there are any more conversations, we would love to be a part of that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. And we just had another hand go up for, it looks like Jacqueline Carter. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Jacqueline, you go have to, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I lost you guys for a minute there. I didn't know if you called my name. I'm also between.
Jacqueline, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, 15792 East Indian Brook Circle.
Okay.
And we are in the home between the last two people who just spoke, so just reiterating what they said also that would be right literally in my backyard since I'm between the other two, and just want to thank everybody again for giving this your consideration.
Okay.
And look forward to hopefully a good resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else for public comment on this item?
Mayor, I do not see any other public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:02 PM. Council, you have two items in front of you, C1 and C2. I would entertain further discussion and motions on either, but Josh, you have an item?
Yeah, if I may, I'm not going to say it again. I'll say it one more time, Debbie. This, this is, as a lot of you know, I have about a month left in this chair, but this is something that I'm very, very proud that is coming in front of us tonight. It's been a long process. I wish, I wish engineering was here. I wish Jason Jacobs was here, but not tonight, but maybe they're watching, and it's just been, it's, this is the culmination of an incredible partnership. There was mention of the team. The 10 identified members of that team are absolutely incredible, from civil to the developers to Mueller, to, I mean, just an incredible job in bringing forth what I truly believe is a dendritic development. I know, I've got to say it one more time, but I've got also, just to expound on the benefit of this kind of development is huge. It needs to be noted. I believe that we're setting precedent. The state has taken notice. It is just an incredible opportunity to save this community money in perpetuity, to use Mother Nature instead of miles and miles of underground concrete is just huge, and I truly appreciate this development, the owners, everybody working together and getting this to happen. So if I may, it would be, it would be my honor to make the motion. If I could find it, I should have had it ready here.
3.308.2.
And sorry, I apologize.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.308.2 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, and then you have item C2.
I move to approve the Third Amendment to the amended and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement, Northern Property, based upon staff findings, subject to the approval of ordinance number 3.308.2.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item D.
Bye. I'm just kidding.
Now that you got dendritic, you're done.
I thought you were going to say dendritic masterpiece.
There you go. Next item up is item number D, and just like the previous one, council, there's two items, two parts to it. Item D is for Douglas 234, filing 6. The item D1 is a minor development plat, and item D2 is a subdivision agreement. Stacy, are you still doing the Stacy Brianna Show?
We are.
All right, rock and roll.
So you're stuck with me to struggle through this again. So, good evening again. This is a proposal for a minor development plat to subdivide the property into 11 commercial lots. This property has been posted, and public notice requirements have been satisfied. Next slide, please. So the property is located on the northeast corner of Chambers Road and Hess Road. The property was annexed and zoned as part of the Douglas 230.
234.
234 development in 1987. In 2002, the property was renamed and rezoned to commercial as part of the Douglas 234 plan development. The applicant has submitted this minor development plat to subdivide the property into 11 buildable lots, a landscape tract and an unbuildable tract for a private drive. The buildable lots will allow for the development of commercial uses on the property per the Douglas 234 plan development. Next slide, please. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies this property as being within a community center character area. The property is represented by the blue outline in the center of the map. This designation is intended to serve multiple neighborhoods by providing a variety of commercial and retail service land uses. Based on this analysis, staff has determined that the request to subdivide the property to allow for the future development of commercial uses is consistent with the recommendations of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Next slide, please. The purpose of the minor development plat process is to review lot sizes and layout for compliance with town standards. Two of these requirements are consistency with the land development ordinance and the zoning for the property. The proposed subdivision of the property is consistent with the requirements outlined within the land development ordinance and the zoning on the property. The proposed lot sizes, lot widths, lot coverage, access, and circulation proposed meet the minimum requirements outlined. Additional requirements, including the building setbacks, building height, landscaping, and parking, will all be determined at the time of site plan. Alex from the town's engineering department will now provide information on access and traffic. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Stacy, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So as Stacy mentioned, another key element of this project was the access and the traffic impacts. Engineering staff performed a review of the traffic study and the plans provided by the developer's team to ensure conformance with town criteria. To start with the access points, this project is proposing two access points for the development, both of which are in accordance with the 2002 development plan for the Douglas 234 development. One is a full movement access point to Chambers Road via Red Sky Drive and its roundabout, and the second is a ride-in, ride-out-only access to Hess Road near the eastern property boundary. It's important to note that the proximity of this property to the major intersection of Chambers and Hess was a limiting factor in the planning of these access points. To illustrate this, an aerial view of this location is included on the slide. Please note how far back the medians are located on both Chambers and Hess from the intersection. This was done to accommodate the ultimate turn lanes necessary at the intersection. So this show really kind of helps you, helps see the full footprint of the intersection when it's laid out in its ultimate configuration. So the result is that the intersection really encumbers almost all of the frontages of this property on both Chambers and Hess. So that's a major reason why no additional access points can be granted to this property on Chambers, or why the access point to Hess Road is limited to a restricted movement. Next slide, please. As previously referenced, this slide shows the original development plan for the overall Douglas 234 development. The blow-up view on the right side of the slide highlights the commercial portion of the property, which shows the two planned access points that are currently being proposed. No deviations are being requested from this plan. Next slide, please. As stated, the developer was required to perform a traffic study for town review that analyzed the project's impacts to adjacent roadways and intersections. As the town reviewed this analysis, staff heard two major concerns from residents of the adjacent neighborhoods. The first was regarding the increase in traffic this project would bring to Red Sky Drive. Long-term, the commercial development could bring as many as 6,000 new trips per day to Red Sky Drive between Chambers and the roundabout, which would bring the total traffic on the road to around 7,700 vehicles per day. While that is a significant increase, it should be noted that Red Sky Drive is a collector roadway that was designed to handle both commercial and residential traffic for the entire Douglas 234 development. While the traffic volumes have historically been low on this roadway with the absence of commercial traffic to date, the road and its roundabout were planned to accommodate the additional traffic from the commercial development. Staff also received concerns regarding the potential for cut-through traffic through the adjacent neighborhoods. Certainly, we understand those comments. That's a common concern for a corner commercial development such as this one that is surrounded by neighborhoods. We have two ways we can work to address this. The first relates to the traffic mitigation that the developer will be obligated to perform with this project. That mitigation is focused on improving the operations at the development's main access from Chambers Road on Red Sky Drive to make that access as accessible and convenient as possible for commercial traffic. Second, staff will commit to monitoring the adjacent neighborhoods for cut-through traffic issues as the development occurs. The town does have an established program for addressing neighborhood traffic and speeding issues through our traffic division and our police department, and certainly, town staff can work with the HOA on solutions if cut-through traffic does become an issue. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the traffic study determined that two items of traffic mitigation are required of this project. The developer will be obligated to two improvements to help improve the long-term operation of the Chambers and Red Sky Drive intersection. First, the developer is required to fund 100% of the cost of the traffic signal at the Chambers and Red Sky intersection. The developer will provide this funding to the town with the recordation of this plat, and the town will design and construct the traffic signal when the intersection meets the required traffic warrants. Second, the developer will be required to widen Red Sky Drive on their own property to create a second westbound left-turn lane at the intersection. This lane is necessary to provide adequate turn storage for vehicles turning left onto Chambers, and it will ensure that the queuing does not impact operations at the roundabout. Again, the goal of both of these improvements is to improve the operations at Chambers and Red Sky Drive to make that a more convenient route for commercial traffic. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Alex. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the 2035 Master Plan, the land development ordinance, and the Douglas 234 plan development. Utility providers have confirmed compassability, capacity, and availability. Referral agency comments have been addressed. The Planning Commission heard this application on October 29th, 2020, and recommended unanimous approval. Next slide, please. So therefore, staff and Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Douglas 234 filing number 6 minor development plat. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have, or Brianna will be. And the applicant is also present this evening and does have a presentation for you tonight.
Okay, wonderful. Before we invite the applicant for their presentation, council, do you have any questions? John?
Yeah, this one's for Alex. Alex, you mentioned, you quoted a number, 7,700 trips potentially. You also indicated that. potentially. You also indicated that that roadway was a was a collector. With with the new improvements about what is the maximum, you know, number of trips that a collector such as that road could handle? Do you have sort of like a ballpark number there? I'm just trying to gain sort of a ratio.
Yeah, so generally, and I believe this was included in the traffic study, but generally, a collector, a two-lane collector roadway like that can handle up to 12,000 cars a day operationally.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Cheryl?
Yeah, what is the diameter of that rotary?
I don't have that information offhand. Give me one second, and I will measure and tell you.
And the second part of that, is it a two-lane or one-lane?
This roundabout is about a 120-foot diameter.
And is it a one-lane or two-lane?
It's a one-lane roundabout.
Other questions, Cheryl?
No.
Jeff, did you have any questions? No? Okay, Josh, did you have any questions? All right. So if the applicant is here. Grant, I see your your face is up there. So Grant, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you can go with your presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mayor and members of council, thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is Grant Nelson with Republic Investment Group. My address is 5750 DTC Parkway, Greenwood Village, Colorado 80111. I want to thank the staff tonight, Stacy, for making the presentation. Alex, Brianna, thank you for putting this together and for processing it. I'm here tonight on behalf of our development team. Our development team includes Andy Tritley with Nantana Capital, Troy Bales, and Jack Scanlon with Rick Engineering, and Andy Bittner with Sullivan Hayes Brokerage. If you could go to the next slide, that'd be great.
Just one moment.
PowerPoint has been naughty with us tonight, Grant. So give her, be a little patient, and we'll get it pulled up here.
Not a problem.
In the meantime, we can all look at Brianna's baby Yoda ornament on her tree. You should have, you should have got and unhooked it and like held it up to the camera while we were. No, I'm just kidding.
There we go. Tonight, we will cover for you the the property history, the site plan, the landscape. Alex did a great job in the transportation infrastructure, which is hard for me to say for some reason, but we'll cover that as well, the utilities, drainage, storm drainage, and our basic project schedule. If you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. Douglas 234 left this lot when they plotted this originally as one lot. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to file a minor development plan, which will break this up into 11 separate lots, as Stacy covered. So if you could move to the next slide, that'd be great. So the Douglas 234 property was approved by council in 2002. And when it approved this site in this development, it approved a lot of the existing knowns on this site. The access at that point was determined, the the grading, the drainage, the utility infrastructure, the roundabout was located, the access off the roundabout and the diameter or the direction it came off the roundabout was the was really set in stone at that approval. So we started working on this site in 2016. As some of you may know, there's 31 separate owners of this property. So we worked for a long time to get them to work together to get this under contract. We've been working with staff since 2019, about the summer of 2019. And for some of you who may know, I've been working in Parker since 2000. Originally worked for REIT that we did the Walmart and the Home Depot. We did the Kohl's a few years ago. I completed the King's Supers up at Cottonwood Drive and I'm a partner in southwest corner of Parker and Hess. So a big fan of the town of Parker, constantly pushing retailers to look at Parker. And this is a great site. It's a it's a bit of a tweener site, as in to say, it's a little bit too small to be anything big and too big to be anything small. So the reason for 11 lots and the way we have it planned out is just to meet that design. So if you could go to the next slide, the design is these 11 lots. As I said previously, the access point off of Hess, the access point off of Red Sky were previously determined, the geometry of those. And so we're working with the constraints that were placed then. But we still believe this can be a really good corner within the town of Parker. We're excited to bring these lots forward, and and we think we can bring a real quality development to the site. Next slide, please. Next slide. So the next slide is the landscape plan. And it's kind of hard to to show a true landscape plan on 11 vacant lots, but the landscape that you see is the landscape that we will install with the development. And then down at the eastern edge of the property, highlighted in yellow, was a tract that the original developer put in place to give even a larger buffer between the residential to the east and this lot. So between the 25-foot landscape buffer and the buffer that was created with that original plat that the HOA owns, there is, from a development perspective, from retail development perspective, there's actually a good boundary or buffer between the commercial and the residential. Next slide, please. So as Alex went over, the transportation infrastructure was something we worked on long and hard all summer, pretty much with Alex, with Rick Engineering. We've been brought in Farron Pierce National Traffic Firm to make sure that we were getting it right. Troy Bales with Rick Engineering will go over the transportation and the utility on the site. If you're ready to go, Troy.
Thank you, Grant. Yeah, so as as Alex had mentioned and and Grant had mentioned, this is an infill project, and we acknowledge that the traffic aspect can be scrutinized. We wanted to ensure we got it right, so we spent a better half of the summer addressing the traffic component. This involved collaboration with my team, Rick Engineering, a second local engineering firm, Farron Pierce, and the town of Parker Engineering Traffic Staff. This resulted in a robust traffic study that has been reviewed and approved by town staff. The study results confirmed our two access locations, which are consistent with the Douglas 234 development plan. And as Alex had mentioned, our off-site infrastructure include, as shown on this, on the inset of the of the picture, will include an additional left turn lane, which totals two left turn lanes, and a and the funding of a traffic signal at Chambers and and Red Sky intersection. In addition, the onsite private drive will have detached walks for pedestrian connectivity throughout the development and adjacent roadways. Next slide, please. Water and sewer services will be provided by Parker Water and Sanitation District. As shown in the diagram, we connect to their facilities at two locations for water and one location for sewer. All proposed facilities have been reviewed and approved by Parker Water and Sanitation District and meet all applicable standards. Next slide, please. We have prepared a drainage study for this project. Runoff of this project drains into an existing storm drain system located on the eastern edge of our property. Detention for the increased runoff has been provided by a downstream regional detention basin that was designed with the proposed development in mind. All proposed onsite storm facilities have been reviewed and approved to meet all applicable standards and specifications. The existing site generally slopes from the north to northwest to the southeast. Proposed grading for the project stays consistent with the existing conditions and maintains a similar character. And now I'll turn it back over to Grant to close out the presentation.
Thanks, Troy. Next slide, if you don't mind. So the the tentative project schedule is to complete the minor development process here yet this fall. Start work December, January. We think it'll take six to eight months to complete the site work, and that hopefully will have some users out constructing sites in late 2021, early 22. Next slide, please, if you don't mind. We believe that this site is consistent with the master plan. You know, everything that Stacy mentioned, we really tried to fit this within the criteria of what Parker wanted. We really appreciate staff's working with us on this, and diligently they worked to bring this forward tonight. As I said earlier, we appreciate all your time tonight. If you guys have any question, our entire project team is here to answer questions. Thank you.
Grant, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counsel, do you have any questions for Grant or the rest of his team? John?
Grant, I'm just curious as to the origin of the the name of the private drive and if commemorative road placards will be available if this development gets approved?
Yes.
The name of the of the of the road, is that the question, John?
John, John has a tattoo that says sliceroo. And he was wondering if that was, you know...
Where did that come from?
If there was any relevance to that.
One of our project partners wanted to name the private drive Rosebud, but as you know, in Douglas County, there's a lot of roads named a lot of things. That name was already taken. So Andy Bittner with Sullivan Hayes came up with the name sliceroo. It's a golf tournament liquid country club, and he thought it would be fun to name the private drive sliceroo. So there, that's how we came up with it.
There you go. Do you, do we have any questions for Grant? Jeff, do you have any? Raise your hand. No? Cheryl, did you raise your hand?
Thank you.
Just for staff, not for Grant.
Okay, Cheryl, go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. I'm reading through the documentation. It talks about alternative motions for this site. And one of them is stating that the request does not meet the following criteria, and I'm not sure what that is there, and also that it be moved to a future date. Can you explain?
So that's part of the planning commission packet. So there are always options, depending on how the project goes, to have alternative motions. Staff's recommendation is to, staff and planning commission's recommendation is to approve this item, but there are always options out there.
I was just wondering what the issues were behind these options.
So were those alternative motions in our packet or in the planning commission's packet?
It was in our packet.
But it's it's a copy of...
Referencing the planning commission.
Right. So it's so our packet doesn't have the, okay, I get, I just want to understand what you were asking. Jim, did you, do you have any insight? I mean, I know we have alternative motions given all the time. Was there any specific reason that that you're aware of outside of the normal?
This is standard protocol by the community development department to include alternative motions in the planning commission staff report.
Yeah, okay. Did you have any other questions, Cheryl?
No, I'm just, you know, since those alternatives were there, something must be behind why you're bringing that alternative option in. So I'm wondering what that was.
I can just state that that every planning commission report that I read the past eight years has had alternative motions in it. A motion to continue, a motion to amend, or a motion to recommend.
Yeah, but there has to be something behind it, and I'm asking what that was.
But I think, well, that's what she's saying, is that there isn't anything behind it. Every every item to the planning commission has those alternative motions. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the reason we do include that is just to give our planning commission members the language. So if something came up during the hearing and staff was recommending approval, but they wanted to continue it for certain reason or even deny it, that motion or that wording is there for them to use. It's really just as a reference point.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from?
Cue card.
No? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 8:26 PM. As I stated before, in case anyone has come in late, public comment is specific to this item on the agenda. What you'll do is you'll use your raise your hand feature. And I know we already have a couple people with their hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit. At the beginning, when you've been promoted over, I will call your name. You can go ahead and state your name and address for the record. I will start the timer. At 30 seconds before the end of your time, I will let you know you have 30 seconds left. And at the end of the three minutes, I will thank you, and we will move on to the next person. I do know we we have several attendees on here who have have names listed that are are pseudonyms or or names that probably aren't their actual name. You'll need to tell us what your actual name is. I think we had like a Timber Wolf on there a second ago. So you'll have to use your actual name and address for public comments. So with that, Danette, I see that we have three people up there. If you'll go ahead and call out who you're promoting over, and then we will get started.
Okay, Mayor Wade, I just promoted P. Davis. Please state your name and address.
Hi there. My name is Paulette Davis. I live at 12085 South Great Plain Court. I live in the western side of the Horse Creek Development, so I am not directly tied to this piece of property, but I have some concerns for the homeowners there that I would hope the council could maybe address or ask questions on. I believe that lot number 11 is supposed to be a daycare, which would sit immediately on top of one of our neighbors. I'd like to know what kind of noise mitigation is going to be handled if that daycare does get put in. I've also been told that lot number one will be a gas station. I'd like to know what council would think of light mitigation for the homeowners that live right there on Red Sky, not to mention noise mitigation for them. And I'd also like to bring up a safety issue for the homeowners that live along Red Sky. Currently, there is a four-foot split rail fence along the backs of those homes. Last year, we had an attempted abduction from the house immediately on the corner next to the roundabout. Town denied the homeowner being able to put in a privacy fence to match the rest of the community because it backed to open space. So I'd like to know what the town council can do to provide some additional security for our homeowners that back up to that road now that we're going to have higher traffic concerns, higher potential abductions for children over short fences, not to mention the noise mitigation from the traffic. And I am a little concerned about how close the traffic light is going to be at Red Sky and Chambers compared to Hess and Chambers. Is there a minimum distance that needs to be kept between those two traffic lights to help with traffic flow? And my last concern is, just last year, we actually put in a monument and finished our landscaping right there at Red Sky and Chambers. Now that the Chambers Road was widened, I'd sure hate to see all of our hard work and money spent having it torn up by this development of the of this plot on the other side. So I'd like to know who's responsible for making sure that our landscaping that we put in is made whole and that it gets put back to the way it was before the construction started. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, Danette?
Next, we have Mike Berry.
Okay. Mike, she'll go ahead and promote you over. If you could, when she does, if you can unmute yourself and then state your name and address for the record, please. Mike, go ahead and need to unmute yourself for me. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, sure can. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Michael Berry, 12198 South Red Sky Drive.
Okay.
And as Paulette said, you know, we have many concerns in this neighborhood. My first question suggestion would be to, at the very least, put this off until we have a full year of normal Douglas County school districts going on, so you can do a true traffic study. I can tell you before this COVID hit and everything with normal operations, gold rush during student drop-off and pickup, Hess back up onto Chambers Road already. And that's what's a one-lane roundabout there, which from these plans does not look to be expanded at all. So while you will have two left-hand turn signals onto Chambers, you still have a single round, single lane roundabout going to that. So it's not going to mitigate any kind of traffic for that. And it's going to make getting in and out of the neighborhood more dangerous. It's going to put more children at risk with that increased traffic there and kids walking to school from the neighborhoods. And it's really something that it sounds like was not fully vetted out, being done in the summer during the, when schools were mostly shut down. And even now, they're only going half rate until, I believe, the end of this week before they're shut down again. The other thing with that is kind of, is also like Paulette had said, you know, we have a split rail backing up to that property. And it's very easy for people to reach over and everything like that. So if sound mitigation is great, you know, trees and all that, but there needs to be a physical barrier there to really put safety at care. You know, I think we need to worry about safety of our citizens before we need to worry about commercial interests. And like Grant had said, they have... And like Grant had said, they had purchased property back in 2016. They knew it was a single unit there. So you kind of knew what you were getting into when you purchased it. So asking to change the rules after the fact while not doing full studies with normal circumstances, to me, it just seems a bit irresponsible and not giving the true service to the citizens of the town. That's all I have. Thank you.
The next comment is from Laura Mason.
Okay. Laura, if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, you guys able to hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. My name's Laura Mason. I live at 12124 South Swift Foxway, Parker, Colorado, 80134. My husband and I, with our children, have lived in our home for almost 15 years. I'd like to provide some additional points of consideration related to the surrounding area of this lot. Of the many developments of this plat, I'm specifically concerned about the addition of the fourth leg to the existing roundabout on the northern side of the lot. For the ease of reference, I'll refer to it as the intersection. I live 300 feet north of the intersection. My neighbors and I have multiple safety and quality of life concerns related to the vehicle traffic associated with the proposed plat's intersection. Gold Rush Elementary School is 900 feet north of the intersection. The pandemic has altered traffic patterns, and current observations do not reflect typical conditions. I'd like to point out that when the traffic study was conducted in August, I believe it was August 19, 2019, it did not capture accurate afternoon peak data. The traffic impact study reviewed the afternoon peak hours between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Gold Rush Elementary School is in session from 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM. Additionally, the local middle school and high school buses drop kids off in the area between 3:10 PM and 3:35 PM. Using the AM peak time counts will not be accurate because there's a larger number of students walking home than there are walking to school. During most school years, Douglas County School District has reduced bus service, and as a result, a large number of cars pick up and drop off students each day. There are six streets that feed traffic into the school and only one exit direction towards the intersection. This consistently causes a traffic jam at the intersection in its current state. This could be multiplied six times based on the traffic study that was conducted in August 2019, likely worse during the winter since the study was conducted during good weather. In the event that this intersection cannot be changed, there's a few suggestions I'd like to propose. That is to require the construction of the traffic light at Chambers and Red Sky Drive at the beginning of the project. This may ease the traffic held up at the stop sign at Chambers and offer a relief to the traffic backed up to the intersection. Provide a variance to construct a six-foot privacy fence along the open space for the homes in the cul-de-sac on East Swift Fox Place that back up to Red Sky Drive. One of those homes was the situation with the child that Ms. Davis spoke of earlier.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, provide additional landscaping along the north side of Red Sky Drive to provide sound dampening and privacy for those homes in that cul-de-sac that I had previously mentioned. That's my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Laura, thank you very much. Okay, so it looks like next up, we've got Leslie Stoops. Danette, if you could promote Leslie. And Leslie, if you could unmute yourself and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Chris Stoops.
Okay, sorry about that, Chris. It said Leslie on the screen.
Yeah, it says Leslie. That's all right. It's my wife. Our address is 12171 South Red Sky Drive. We back right up to lot number 11 where the daycare is going to be put in. Brayanne, thank you for responding to some of my emails, and thank you also to Alex who responded about the traffic study. I guess I do have a hard time, I guess, regards to other concerns about that traffic study. I do not believe that a light is really going to do much to help mitigate all the traffic that occurs there. Will probably create more congestion, especially those turning right on Chambers Road, trying to get to work every morning. A lot of traffic being backed up there, and then also the kids getting dropped off at Gold Rush. Also, we do have a concern. We weren't told that a daycare is going to be put in behind our house, and I'm not quite sure what the landscaping plan looks like there. We have visited a few daycares between now and then. We figured it out, and it seems like there is, I mean, there is a lot of noise that comes from those playground areas. And so I'd like to know what type of noise mitigation is going to occur there to help from interfering with us enjoying our property that we've lived out here for almost 10 years. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Chris. Next up, we've got Gary.
I want to make this one to school.
Oh, and Chris, looks like you're still, there you go. Gary, your next up?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Barronbrook, 12219 South Red Sky Drive. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor-elect, and town council. I appreciate your time. I wanted to give you guys a little bit of background and some concerns that I have specifically with this particular development. And as the background goes, I have been working with the town. I've submitted some letters starting back last year with a few of my concerns. You know, a few of those were traffic, privacy, safety, noise mitigation, so on and so forth. And then if you, so moving forward, just so you kind of have an idea of what I'm talking about, this particular parcel of land sits about 30 feet above and directly behind my home, okay? And I'm not stupid. We didn't buy this house, you know, not knowing that they weren't going to develop anything back there. So we were fully expecting something. Now, that said, my concerns are this. And I'm not going to get into the traffic portions because I think a few of the callers prior to me did a fabulous job with articulating those concerns. But there's a few of them that I specifically would like to share with town council, and I hope that the town council can ask questions unlike what the planning commission did. I believe it was on the 29th when I was on that call. And basically, the developer, I asked, when it was a public forum, you know, they said, well, there's a 25-foot variance. Okay, well, I get that. But again, we're still talking about this hill behind us is probably 25, 30 feet up in the air. So realistically, there's no variance. Now, we were told last year that the developer would do some sort of a privacy wall, and they would do some dense...
30 seconds, Gary.
I think they called it dense vegetation. And last week, or on the 29th, when I asked about it at the planning commission meeting, nobody could follow up with me and say, yeah, we are going to do that or no, we're not going to do that. All I was told was that, and I believe the developer, and I think his name's Alex, said that, you know, each business is responsible for doing their own landscaping.
Gary, your time's up. If you want to go ahead and finish your sentence for me?
Okay, so I guess, long story short, I hope that the council would either reject this or postpone it until we can get some clarification around a lot of these concerns that a ton of the homeowners have around here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Kathy. Kathy, go ahead and unmute yourself, and if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Kathy Santelli, and I live at 12136 South Swift Foxway in Parker. My three boys and I have lived in this home for 10 years, and we love our neighborhood. We've known there's going to be a commercial development on this property from the beginning, and I've read really good things about Grant Nelson, and, you know, I'm looking forward to what you can do in our neighborhood to enhance it. I do have serious concerns about the traffic. The entrance and exit main, you know, entrance and exit for this development is through the roundabout on Red Sky, and I live less than 100 feet from that roundabout. Literally, I already have to put on my hazards making a right turn into my driveway because people come around that roundabout so fast and follow so closely. So my recommendation is to make a larger roundabout to slow people down, and also to make two lanes on the roundabout, and I believe that will alleviate some of the traffic concerns people have about getting in and out. I do agree with Laura Mason and the earlier callers all about Gold Rush, and I won't go into detail, but I do have a long line of cars twice a day, every day during the week, that stop in front of my house for about 20 minutes during drop-off and pickup. This is not the fault of Gold Rush Elementary. It's just part of living in a neighborhood near a school. So I believe you need to design the development and the traffic to work around that because that can't really change. The next thing I'd like to add is that we do have some concerns about noise pollution and light pollution in this existing neighborhood. We enjoy a really nice quality of life here, and we want a development that's going to have walkability and, you know, I don't, I know that there's going to be a lot of drive-throughs on this development. I don't want to hear, "Would you like fries with that?" when I'm sleeping with my summer windows open. So it would be great if you could put the noisier businesses on lots 2 through 7 that are not next to any houses. I think that that would really put a lot of people's minds at ease. And lastly, some traffic calming measures like enhanced pedestrian crossings, speed bumps, and some other safety measures. I've seen them in other neighborhoods. There are ways to keep our kids safe when they're walking to school. We just need the developer to include these in a thoughtful, planned-out way prior to approval. So I'm asking for a condition of approval on this development. We want more landscaping...
30 seconds, Kathy.
A buffer on the north side, a two-lane traffic circle, speed bumps, and I'd really like to see that all trucks must enter and exit via Hess, not through Red Sky Drive, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. All right, it looks like we have next up, did you promote, is, who's next up, Danette? I kind of lost track on that.
Ian Alfner is next.
Okay, Ian. Ian, if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ian Alfner, 15750 East Indian Brooks Circle. I live in Horse Creek, Upper Horse Creek, I should say. I know a lot has been talked about by Alex Mesta, I believe is his last name, traffic engineer, about getting into the project, and I would definitely take a harder look at trying to get out of the project. I know that it's a challenge. I drop my kids off over at Gold Rush Elementary, and trying to take a left turn during those peak rush hours to go from, I think it's Red Sky right there, and take a left onto Chambers to head south is very difficult at any point during the day, but even more so during those peak rush hours. So I would stress, knowing that, you know, the traffic signal is going to be funded, to just put in the traffic signal right off the bat in order to alleviate any potential egress concerns, since it's already going to be funded and, you know, funds are there. In addition to that, I do think, you know, there could be some additional traffic calming measures that may be helpful to the people that live in the immediate area, as well as students that might be riding their bikes or walking to school. Some of those similar to what Kathy had expressed previous to me, being speed bumps or even pedestrian-friendly crossings with flashing lights, something of that nature. But I know those items do exist, and all the planners here on this college are well aware of them. I also, you know, feel a concern, you know, I won't experience it directly, but, you know, the noise and light pollution have us taken care of as well as landscaping buffers. And I'd also stress to the town, because this seems to be a problem in most neighborhoods of development, that native trees are actually allowed to be planted within a project like this. You know, speaking from experience here in Horse Creek, about every tree that's planted literally dies and has to be replanted the next year to meet the landscaping specifications. And I don't know if that's just the beautification standard the planning team has or not, but there's definitely a lot of other trees that could be utilized in order to provide more significant dense coverage and will also survive and, you know, live the...
30 seconds there, Ian.
I appreciate it. I know that a project like this is going to be great for the area, and the uses that are going to come are ultimately going to be great as well. But, you know, a couple of things could be looked at in order to make sure that it's done appropriately. And, you know, Gold Rush isn't going to be adversely impacted, even more so than, you know, the challenges they already face. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Danette, I don't see any other hands raised. Do you? Can you confirm that?
I can confirm there are no other public comments.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:48 PM. Grant, I know, go ahead and unmute yourself, Grant. I know you were on there listening to that as well. It looks like the majority of the questions, there was lots of comments, and there was a few questions specific to the traffic light in terms of the timing, and then also noise and traffic mitigation, and then efficacy of the traffic study. Would you mind addressing some of those questions for the citizens on the call?
Sure. No, I'd be happy to, Mayor Wade. And traffic, you know, I've been doing this 28 years. Traffic is always a difficult subject, especially around retail. And, you know, one of the hard parts about traffic is that, you know, you're guessing at traffic counts that are 20 years from now. So the traffic counts that you see in those studies are, you know, 20 years out. And we're making estimates on what's going to happen now in the future. You know, if you could guess what the Dow Industrial Average is in 20 years and place a bet on it now, we could all probably stop doing what we're doing and retire. But traffic studies are difficult in that respect. Part of the reason why we had Rick and Farron Peers work with Alex and Dave Aden and the town staff was to make sure we had this right. And I will defer to Troy Bales with Rick Engineering and Alex to answer some of the more technical questions. But, you know, a couple that just, you know, I'm the last here. I'm not an engineer of any sort, and it takes me a long time to just even understand these traffic studies. But, you know, a wider roundabout actually, I think, creates more speed and more danger. We do try really hard on these traffic studies to get them right, and that's why they spent all summer working on this. So I'll defer to Alex and Troy. Not that I'm trying to dodge it. I just shouldn't be answering traffic engineering questions because I'll get it wrong, right, Alex?
Alex or Troy, would you like to jump in there?
Yeah, I'll start and Troy jump in if you want. But I'd like to address the school traffic. You know, we heard several concerns about that, and certainly, we understand that, you know, we, most of our schools have traffic stacking on the roads at one point or another. As I think somebody did mention, the counts were taken back in August of 2019, so that is pre-COVID. So Troy and his team made special care to make sure they got counts during the school day to make sure this was accounted for. On the peak hour counts that I believe Ms. Mason brought up, 24-hour counts are always taken for traffic studies. You have to get around the clock counts to fully do the analysis, and that was the case here. I think what she was referring to is additional counts of turning movements are sometimes taken during the peak hours, during the morning and afternoon peak, just to aid in the analysis and make sure they're getting everything right during the peak hour. So the full, the morning and the afternoon traffic at the school was taken into account. You can find those counts included in the report, but the full counts were taken to account for the afternoon drop-off. And since the planning commission hearing on this two weeks ago, the principal of Gold Rush actually has reached out to the town. I think she heard some of the citizen concerns about the traffic with the school and the commercial mixing, and she reached out to the town. Town staff has worked with that school, I think as recently as a couple of years back, on some operational changes to help out with their traffic stacking out there. Certainly, we can open up those lines of communication again. As I mentioned, most schools in town have a similar problem to this, and it's, you know, we have some things we can work on with the school to hopefully minimize the queuing we see out there so they're not impacting adjacent developments.
Okay. Troy, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? I can see you're unmuted.
Troy got bumped out of the meeting, and he was trying to get back in. Troy, can you hear? So Alex, one of the other things that came up a couple of times was the timing of the traffic signal. We would advocate that it goes in right away. The town staff has a different opinion, so, and I'm not trying to put it on you other than, you know, you guys have policies you follow, and I want to make sure that the citizens understand that the policies are followed because of reason. citizens understand that the policies are, you know, followed because of reasons, so.
Sure, and I certainly understand where the residents are coming from on that, and the reason we don't want to install it upfront necessarily is because we follow federal guidance that really determines when a traffic signal should be installed. We try to stay consistent and follow that on all of our intersections to make sure we're being, taking a consistent approach throughout the town. I will say that we had Troy and his team do what's called a warrant study with, with the traffic study, which that basically looks at, there's different warrants that were warranted traffic study. They give anything from traffic volumes to pedestrian counts, things like that. We had Troy and his team take a look at when we thought those might be met to warrant the installation of a traffic signal. I believe that came back as looking like pretty early in the development, the signal's going to be warranted. So while I think staff would prefer not to install it upfront while it's not warranted, we think, we don't think it'll be very long before the warrants are met, and we'll want to install that signal.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and then Grant, it looks like the only other couple of things on there, there was some questions about noise pollution, about light pollution, about safety. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that? I'm sorry? And privacy wall?
And, yeah, so the privacy wall, maybe address that. That, you know, we've been working with Brianna and the staff since 2000, you know, July of 2019 was when we made our initial submittal. And until the planning commission, right, Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that we've ever heard anyone from staff to the applicant mention a, a privacy wall or, you know, a wall of any sort, so.
That's correct. That hasn't been required for any of this development, any parts of this yet.
So, you know, we're, I've heard the comments, and walls are tough because they, you stop, you start, some people like them, some people don't. After doing this for 20 years, the walls are very controversial because some neighbors like them, some of them don't, and so, you know, the, I know one of the, you know, Gary, I, I know you had asked about the, the landscape, and we, we are providing, you know, the original developer, when they platted this, and when they put this zoning in place, put a 25-foot landscape buffer in place. There's the buffer between the landscape on our property and the tract of land that the HOA owns. So we're, we're trying to make sure that we meet all the standards. We're going to install all that landscape along the boundary of the property day one, and Ian, we'll take under advisement that you still have great luck getting things to grow and make sure that our landscape guy puts in, you know, plant materials and, you know, we get a, a good landscape buffer established as soon as possible.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? No? John, do you?
No, I think it was, what, the light pollution? Is, do, do we get that addressed?
It was, it was a comment, but I mean, you can, if you have a question, you can ask it more about it.
No, I think, I think you, you mentioned light pollution to be addressed, I figured.
I don't, I, what I, yeah, I don't know if this at the plat, at this, at the minor development plat, if that's a specific piece that comes out yet, unless Grant's got more to add to that?
Yeah, I would tell you that I, I just have done enough developments in Parker, and know that Parker has a pretty robust light mitigation policy. I think it's zero light at the lot line. Brianna, you can speak to it better than I can, but I know our, you know, phonometric studies in the past have had to take the light down to zero before it leaves the property line, and we'll work with all of our users to make sure that they honor all those, you know, they'll have to to get through the code, but we also, we do want to be good neighbors. We want to make sure that, that their, things are being followed, and light mitigation might be something you can speak better to, Brianna, or Alex, than I can.
Mayor, could I just add a point of clarification?
Sure.
This is an application to create legal lots of records.
Right, it's the minor, yeah, it's not.
And a lot of the issues that I'm hearing, at least in the public testimony component, and Stacy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, really are site planning issues. Do you want to address that, Stacy?
Sure. So landscaping, lighting, all of that's going to be reviewed on a site plan basis, on a lot-by-lot basis, what's coming in and how we're going to mitigate those measures. So yes, the lighting code within the town's code right now, after you close, lights have to be extinguished an hour after. Grant was correct, at your property lines, you can't exceed one-foot candle. Those are pretty low lighting measurements that we look specifically at.
Okay. I bet those aren't typically addressed at the minor development plat?
Not at the minor development plat, but at the site plan level.
Right, right, okay, cool. Counsel, do you have questions? Jeff, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, all right, so with that, counsel, you have two items in front of you, D1 and D2. I would entertain discussion or motions on each of those.
I move to approve Douglas 234 filing six, minor development plat, based upon staff findings with the following conditions as, as presented in the packet.
Sorry. We have a motion from John, and we have a second from Josh. Motion passes unanimously, and for D2.
I move to approve the subdivision improvement agreement with the conditions contained in the council report.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. Chris, we waiting on anybody, or?
It just did.
Oh, did I, it hasn't on mine.
We already voted.
Oh, you mean the voting? I haven't seen that one.
I thought I voted.
I voted twi, now I'm voting twice.
Yeah, me too.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item E. This is McLaughlin Property, filing one, lot one, used by special review for 9855 Parker LLC Inspire Animal Hospital. Carolyn, you're going to lead us through the presentation tonight.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Town Council.
Actually, you know what? Would you hold, it's nine o'clock before we get rolling, Josh reminded me, how about we take a quick five-minute break if anyone hits, has to hit the bathroom, so.
Sure.
The live feed will stay going, so you, if you're here, you don't have to log off or re-log in, but if anyone needs to take a quick bathroom break, this is the time to do it. Jim, you good?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, you good?
Yes.
I see Jeff's on there, so we should be good. All right, we're back in at 9:07. Carolyn, now it's your time again.
Hi, this, my name is Carolyn Washey-Freeland.
I don't think your mic's on.
Carolyn Washey-Freeland, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. This is a presentation for the McLaughlin filing number one, lot one, used by special review, case number Z20-009. This used by special review has met all public notice requirements. The applicants are here tonight via Zoom, and they'll be available to answer questions after the presentation. This is a request to operate a veterinary hospital in an existing commercial building. The subject property, which is shown in red, oh, I'm sorry, let me get the presentation up. Danette, do you want to?
You know, I realize without Danette sitting there, I asked everyone else if they're ready. I don't, didn't ask Danette if she was ready, so hopefully she is. Danette, are you there? Let me try. Well, Michelle said she had to, she was having a technical issue, she had to go run
Okay.
All right, I just messaged her to let her, she, she was Googling sound, how to fix this, how to do the sound. She's messaged me, she was trying to find a way, so. And I can see one of our Zoom participants, Ben, I believe, Ben, if you could, if you slowly lean back, oh, it just went away because it's got me talking. There's like something with horns on the wall behind you, and if you're in just the right spot, it looks like you have horns.
Yeah.
I wasn't crazy.
There you go.
All right, Danette, are you back on?
Yes, I am. I'm ready.
All right, so if you go ahead and bring the presentation up, we'll go ahead and All right, Carolyn.
Okay, so if you want to start at the vicinity map, which is, I believe, the next slide, great. So this request is to operate a veterinary hospital in an existing commercial building. The subject property, which is shown here in red, is located on the north side of Lincoln Avenue, between Dransfeld and Parker Road, in the old Payless Shoe Store building. Surrounding uses include the Murdochs Retail to the north, TCG, I'm sorry, TSG Automotive to the east, Walgreens, and an unincorporated Douglas County Parcel to the south, and the Crossroads Church to the west. Next slide, please. The existing commercial building is located at 9855 South Parker Road and consists of approximately 3,700 square foot space with existing landscaping and a storefront entrance. The property was originally constructed in 1995, and Payless has been the original tenant since this time. Payless vacated the property in June of 2019, following corporate bankruptcy, and the property has since then remained vacant. Next slide, please. The applicant, 9855 Parker LLC/Inspire Animal Hospital, is requesting a used by special review to allow for 100% of the building to below, be used for a veterinary hospital facility with an outdoor fenced area located at the rear of the building. The site is located within the modified commercial zoning district. The veterinary hospital facilities are listed as a used by special review as it relates to permitted uses within this zoning district. Inspire Veterinary Hospital specializes in treating small-sized animals, and this facility will operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then Saturday and Sundays from 8:00 to 1:00 PM. Next slide, please. Once the used by special review has been approved, a future site plan will be submitted for a proposed outdoor fence, trash enclosure, and landscape screening. The applicant will be adding additional landscape to include street trees and shrubs. Overall, these changes will enhance the Lincoln Avenue frontage in this area. Next slide, please. To address noise from barking dogs and other animals, the applicant has proposed mitigation measures for both interior and exterior space. Interior will be mitigated by the installation of a demising wall during the tenant finish phase. To alleviate barking, animal anxiety, and noise control, the vet staff will practice what they call fear, fear-free techniques for handling animals. No pets will be left alone in the outdoor play area, and the facility will not have any animal boarding operations. To address pet waste removal, waste will be immediately cleaned up, and the area will be disinfected with a hydrogen peroxide product. Waste will be kept in a sealed container and picked up by third party twice per week. Next slide, slide, please. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a used by special review. A detailed analysis of this criteria is located A detailed analysis of this criteria is located in the staff report. For this presentation, staff has chosen to highlight three criteria which are most relevant to this request. For criteria number one, uh, the veterinary hospital is expanded into an existing building located within the Parker 2035 Master Plan's Central Commercial District, which is the, uh, commercial core of the town. The surrounding businesses are all commercial uses, and so the proposed use will be in harmony and, um, compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Staff finds that criteria number one has been met. For criteria number eight, um, establishing landscaping on the site will be brought into compliance, uh, with the original approved landscape plan, and additional streets, street trees will be added along Lincoln Avenue for screening purposes. The proposed use will take place within the existing building, and the outdoor space will be screened by an O-Peg fence with landscaping. The applicant's proposal does not negatively impact, um, existing landscaping, and staff finds that, uh, criteria number eight has been met. The last, um, criteria that we were going to take a look at is, um, that the applicant, for criteria number nine, and the applicant, applicants bring over 25 years of veterinary experience, and they're very familiar with treating a variety of different types of animals. All employees will have safety training to ensure the proper handling of animals and will monitor and clean the air, outdoor area for pet waste on a regular basis. This will ensure that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, um, safety or welfare of current and future residents. Staff finds that criteria number nine has been met. So, um, staff has determined that this request, um, satisfies the nine criteria for a use by special review, and all of the public noticing, um, requirements have been met. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council approve the McLaughlin filing number one, Lot One, used by special review, subject to the eight conditions contained in the staff report. At this time, we'll take questions.
Okay. Carolyn, thank you very much for the presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions for Carolyn? Cheryl?
Just sound. You said that, or, uh, when you were reading the application, that they were going to take care of noise issues. How?
Well, um, the building, um, is concrete, is a concrete build, a concrete block building, and so, um, it has, it is separated from, from the other units. And so, um, when they go in to do the tenant finish, they will be installing demising walls, which are, um, walls that will have, um, a, a soundproof system type of, um, rating on it. And so that's how they're planning to mitigate, um, interior noise from the other units.
And what about overnight stays?
They said no boarding.
Yeah, there's no boarding.
I know, but sometimes with an animal patient, they got to be there more than...
Yeah.
Sure, um, I'm wondering if maybe one of our applicants can answer that. I can answer that, but I think maybe, um, a member from, might be able to answer that better.
It looks like we've got, Ben, you already unmuted because I teased you about the horns behind you on the, on the wall, so, uh, you want to grab that one?
Yeah, I mean, if, if Josh or Jamie are available by chance, they're the two best. They're the two, um, the tenants, so they're going to answer that the best. If you're not, then...
It looks like Josh, it looks like Josh is. Josh, do you want to grab that one?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so we will only be offering services during the day, um, so there won't be any overnight boarding of any animals throughout the night. They'll all be discharged throughout the day.
So, so overnight, there won't be, if there's an animal that's sick, it wouldn't...
Surgery or, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so we would utilize, um, local emergency hospitals, and we would transfer to them for overnight care. They would not stay within the facility.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. Did the applicants have anything else they'd like to add before we go to public comment? Doesn't look like it, no?
I think we're good.
All right. Well, then with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 9:17 p.m. Just as earlier, if you're here for public comment on this item in the Zoom meeting, go ahead and use your raise your hand feature.
Mayor, I do not see any public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:18, and I would entertain further discussion or motion, please.
Um, I move to approve the McLaughlin filing one, Lot One, used by special review based upon staff findings with the following eight conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion from Debbie, and we have a second from John. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item F. This is Cottonwood Highlands filing seven. Like the two, like the ones we had earlier, there are two parts to this one. The part number F1 is final plat, and F2 is subdivision agreement. And Stacy, are you like just the quasi leader of this one, or are you the leader leader of this one?
I will be the leader of this one.
You're the leader of this...
I will even answer questions.
All right, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And then I'll get my presentation up. So this evening, the applicant is proposing a final plat to create 104 single-family residential lots and 17 tracts on approximately 40 acres. The processing of final plats is typically administrative. However, the proposed final plat will vacate a portion of dedicated right-of-way, which triggers the requirement for Town Council approval at a public hearing. Next slide, please. The Cottonwood Highlands filing number seven site is located south of Cottonwood Drive, north of V470, between Jordan and Chambers Road. Lansleaf Street will bisect the property. Next slide, please. The property was annexed into this town in 2003 as part of the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development. The Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development allows for a total of 1,230 residential units on approximately 224 acres. The Cottonwood Highlands PD includes residential, which is shaded in blue, mixed use, which is shaded in red, commercial, which is the yellow areas, and open space, which is the green area. The north side of Cottonwood Drive is located within the residential planning area and is almost fully constructed with approximately 305 single-family detached lots. One of the commercial planning areas, the one that's completely shaded in yellow, was recently developed as a gas station with additional commercial planned. The two mixed-use planning areas on the south side of Cottonwood Drive and the subject properties for tonight's application allow both commercial and residential land uses, and duplexes are permitted use. The mixed-use planning area allows for a total of 920 residential units. In October 2019, Town Council approved the Cottonwood Highlands filing number seven sketch and preliminary plan for a total of 236 duplex residential lots on this property. Next slide, please. The applicant, Lennar Homes, has submitted a final plat for 104 single-family residential lots and 17 parks and open space tracts on approximately 40 acres. The west side of the project is proposed to be platted into an unbuiltable tract that will be platted into lots, open space, parks, and roads with a future final plat. The east side of the project is proposed to be platted into lots. All lot sizes, open space, parks, trails, and engineering requirements outlined within the annexation agreement, the PD zoning, the land development ordinance, and the preliminary plan have been satisfied with this final plat. Next slide, please. When the property was originally platted as Cottonwood Highlands filing number five in 2016, Lansleaf Street was dedicated with a width of 80 feet. This is the area shown between the two blue lines. Since this time, the town has determined that the roadway can be classified as a modified collector roadway, which requires a total width of 60 feet. This is shown between the two orange lines. Due to this change, the applicant and the Town Engineering Department have agreed to reduce the width of Lansleaf Street right-of-way. Therefore, 20 feet of the Lansleaf Street right-of-way will be vacated as part of this final plat application, which is requiring the Town Council hearing tonight. Next slide, please. So with this, staff has reviewed the proposed final plat and has determined that the project aligns with the approved preliminary plan, is consistent with the master plan, meets the minimum requirements of the land development ordinance and the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. Don't read the slide.
I was going to say...
All referral agency comments have been addressed. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council approve the Cottonwood Highlands filing number seven final plat. This concludes our staff report. Um, the applicant, I believe, is present tonight to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, so before we ask the applicant to come on, to clarify, that last slide was not correct.
It was not. Don't read the slide.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Stacy on this?
Stacy, if you could, just take me back in time. We, we've looked at this property, we've negotiated with this property, we've got perks added to this property, and they, they, they played very nicely with us. All that's in front of us today, correct, is the narrowing of a modified collector.
Correct. So the reason this is before you tonight is because there is the vacation of dedicated right-of-way.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, any questions? Nope.
None for me.
Okay. All right, if the applicant is online. I don't see under panelists anyone that I don't recognize, so... Who, who's the, what's the applicant's name?
There's a Lindsay Rappa.
There is a Lindsay. Let's go ahead and promote Lindsay. All right, Lindsay has been promoted. Lindsay, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Lindsay Rappa, and will I be stating my personal address?
Uh, just, just a legal address, so your company address is fine.
Oh, okay, um, 88 Inverness Circle East, um, Building J, Suite 101, um, and that is in Centennial, or Englewood, Colorado, um, and yes, my name is Lindsay Rappa.
Okay, go right ahead.
So this is, um, actually my first time being at a public hearing.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna ease, we're gonna ease you into it then. Yeah, we're gonna ease you into it. It's nice and easy. Typically, if you don't have a, uh, additional presentation to give or anything else to add, you can just simply state that, and then if counsel has any questions specific to you, they'll ask them. Um, and then if you can hang around, because right after this, we'll do public comment, and if there's any questions that come up from the public, you can address them then. So, did you have anything else to add to, to Stacy's presentation?
Oh, we do not, and she did a great job in explaining, um, the, um, point of this Town Council meeting for us.
Excellent, awesome. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Lindsay before we go to public comment? Nope? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment at 9:25 p.m. If there's anyone here wishing to address counsel on this item, please use your raise your hand feature.
Mayor, I do not see any public comments.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:25, and counsel, I would, you have two items in front of you, F1 and F2. I would entertain further discussion or motions, please.
Yeah, I do have a discussion. You're saying it's narrowing of a collector. By how much?
20 feet.
10 feet on each side. Is that right?
Eighty to 60.
Yeah, so the total right-of-way width was 80 feet. Um, in 2019, we entered into an annexation agreement with the applicant to classify this roadway to a modified collector, which requires 60 feet of right-of-way. So it's 10 feet on each side that's being vacated. Um, the applicant is using that additional 10 feet for additional buffer area, so no lots, there's no increase in density, there's no increase in additional lots. It's going to be landscaping, um, and sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
And then, if you could also, I know engineering's probably gone by now, but a narrower street decreases speed, especially a modified collector that bisects a neighborhood, correct?
Right, so one of the reasons they wanted to modify this roadway was it really connects Parker House Road to the south and then Cottonwood Drive. So it's just this little bit of area that is going to connect, uh, within the middle of a residential neighborhood. So technically, narrower roadways slow down traffic. So that is another.
How does that affect parking for the residents?
There will be no parking allowed on this roadway.
Is there parking allowed now?
It is not constructed. Um, when you move north of Cottonwood Drive into the existing Cottonwood Highlands Development, Lansleaf Street does continue. Um, it's a collector roadway until you get to the residential lots, and then it is allowed for parking once you're into the local roadways. But this one will not.
Okay, because you're definitely going to have to have some street parking.
So on this roadway, there will be no homes fronting it. Um, what you'll have is you'll have the roadway, you'll have buffer landscaped areas with sidewalk, trees, and those sort of things. Then as you go into the neighborhood, that's where you're going to get into the local roadways. That's going to be allowed for on-street parking, and each duplex will have an attached two-car garage.
Okay, thank you.
Would a, would a good example, I mean, it's not an exact example, especially since in Straw Ranch, we can't park on our streets anyway because of the HOA, but the way J. Morgan is, there's no houses that front J. Morgan, but J. use J. Morgan to get to other streets that then would ostensibly have on-street parking? Is that a good example?
Correct. Yes, and one of the town requirements for a collector roadway is that you don't have houses fronting on it because they're typically available for higher traffic volumes, um, and so we just don't want houses fronting that.
Other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion then, please.
I move to approve the Cottonwood Highlands filing number seven final plat based upon staff findings.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. Counsel, please vote.
Boy, Chris was on fire. She's really tailed it.
Motion passes unanimously, and on F2?
I move to approve the subdivision agreement, please.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have, I, we're into our item number seven, our ordinances. Seven A is ordinance number 1.549 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the purchase and sale agreement between the Town of Parker and Samurai's Red Sushi and Saki Bar LLC concerning the property known as the Lot 1B Main Street Center First Amendment Property, the Schoolhouse Gym Property. Mr. Maloney, Dr. Maloney, you're going to lead us through this?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and counsel, this item, if you approve, would, uh, approve a purchase and sale agreement between the Town and Samurai Red Sushi and Saki Bar...
I'll say it right.
LLC.
Samurai!
Uh, there are just a few components of the agreement that I want to discuss. This is the form of contract that the Town uses on most purchase and sale agreements. Uh, the purchase price is $275,000. There's also a requirement for reimbursement of water line improvements that were paid for by the Town in the amount of approximately $81,000. Uh, once we go through the, um, the development review process, we come up with the development agreement. That agreement will identify the uses that will be allowed on this property, so it would be a smaller subset of the uses which are currently identified as uses by right for the current zoning of the property. So again, a finer, a smaller subset of uses, and again, this would be at the development agreement and site plan level. And then also, there'll be a maintenance covenant that will run with this project, and that will require that the purchaser maintain and repair all landscaping and other improvements on the property in good repair, again, consistent with the adjacent property, uh, in this case, the schoolhouse, which is obviously a very important property to the town. And then finally, there'll be a closing, but it will not occur until 20 days after the site plan and development agreement are approved, and then no more than 365 days from the effective date of this agreement. Any questions, Mayor, Counsel?
Counsel, any questions for Jim?
Yeah, just to review the financials. So what was a net difference between the price being discussed here and the appraisal?
I think it was about $100,000 differential.
So actually, we're going to lose $100,000 on that transaction?
I, I, I'm not sure that I would look at it necessarily that way. You will be receiving $275,000 if you want to, uh, put it back on the market. You can certainly see if you can, uh, obtain a, a larger purchase price, uh, for the property.
It's, it's my opinion, Counsel, that, that the benefit of selling this property is it's vacant, it does not benefit the town in any way. Um, the benefit of selling this property is to receive a restaurant that would contribute to our community, and, uh, we would, uh, then recoup said $100,000 in a macro picture, if, if that makes sense.
Okay. Other questions for...
And, and we are getting a reimbursement for the tap, right?
Correct.
Of 80,000.
Um, yeah, approximately 81,000, yes.
81.
Jeff, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 9:33 p.m. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at nine thirty-three PM. If there's anyone here from the public wishing to comment on this item, please use your raise your hand feature.
Mayor, I do not see any public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at nine thirty-three PM.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. I don't know if the purchaser is available for comment. That would be Jean Gregory is the principal.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Jean is on there. He didn't raise his hand, but Jean, did you want to add anything to it? We can go ahead and promote you. Oh, looks like you just got promoted over. Jean, I apologize for not calling you out earlier. I didn't realize you were there until I went to public comment. If you want to go and unmute yourself, if you have anything else you'd like to add. Jean, you got to unmute yourself if you're talking. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes. You know, I don't have anything else to add, other than we're looking forward to building another project. We're currently doing Havana's Bakery downtown in the Wild Goose Saloon, and we look forward to adding this to our collection of kind of new and upscale restaurants we're bringing to the town and quality of food, so we're pretty excited about it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Jean. Counsel, entertain further discussion or motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number one point five four nine on second reading, sir.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item seven B. This is ordinance number nine dot three two five on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement buying between the Town of Parker and Ruder Hess Recreation Authority concerning program coordination services. Now, Mary, I know you're, you're at home, or I see you're on there. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I really don't have anything additional to add to this, other than just approving this IGA between Town of Parker and the Ruder Hess Recreation Authority, just for the program coordination, primarily a procedural process for us, so that is all I have to add at this point.
And so just to clarify, Mary, this is the same information that council's been presented with earlier in study sessions, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions for Mary? Nope. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment at nine thirty-six PM. We have four people on the attendee list. If there's anyone who wants public comment, go ahead and raise your, use your raise your hand feature. All right, Danette?
I don't see any public comments.
Okay, we'll close public comment at nine thirty-six, and I would entertain further discussion or motion on this last item, please.
I move to approve ordinance number nine point three two five on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote.
Am I going to be able to vote?
Might have to do a voice vote.
You're not, you log out? All right, let's, we're going to do, we'll do a voice vote. Jeff? Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we'll adjourn at nine thirty-seven PM.